Okay, we're going to call meeting to order, please. For us for the pledge.
......................................................
Good evening, everyone. We will start the meeting with our current forum. If there's anyone who would like to address the board in regards to the budget, please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone? Okay, then we will move right on to our budget workshop. Dr. Conway, I believe some questions were sent to you. You will have to answer them.
Thank you. Core members, you do have a list of those questions and answers in front of you. There's a lot of detail. I will try to give you the high degree of detailed questions, please ask. We also have administrators here who certainly have more answers than I do in many of these instances. The first question was with regard to how many professional development days are in the district they're taking during school days. Mr. Burke did pull forward all that information on absences, but need to substitute from those that he didn't. So includes all kinds of things, field trips, professional development days, loops of absence, jury duty, et cetera. So that information is there for you. If you wish to go through, you can see the number that we had in 2012-13 overall, and then also the number that we had as of today for 2013-14. Question about how many parrot educators are in each building and each classroom. The classroom piece is very difficult to answer. Parrots sometimes are one-to-one and might be in a classroom. They also might be one-to-one in a child that goes to two different classrooms. But there are also para professionals that go to multiple grades and multiple classrooms. So we've given you the number of para professionals per program and school. The breakdown of building use fees in your additional handout that is exhibit B does have under section three at the bottom, and I continue it on the next page, does have the fees for each of those areas. And I would just refer to the schedule on page two of our handout tonight that indicates the number of events at each school. There are events where there is already a custodian present, there are events where there's a custodian present, and yet the event must have another custodian, so that would be overtime. There are events that are on Saturday or Sunday, so outside of regular time, and that would be overtime as well. But there are many events in which we just, we already have custodians on. So those are the number of events per school and the cost associated with that at this point. We were asked about Center Road School custodial overtime. So in this past year, after many, many years, probably since it was opened, many years of just adding classrooms where they were needed, Mrs. Podlich rearranged the entire building. I don't think people were happy at the beginning because everyone had to pack and move. I don't think there was any teacher that actually stayed in their classroom, if she could correct me. And all the classrooms were moved, so that we had grades four and five on the third floor, et cetera, so that the grades levels are right near each other, they can collaborate better with kids, can share teachers, if that's the case as in the fourth and fifth grade. So every single room moved in May and June, or actually in June, July, at Center Road School. And we had to put a team of people there. In addition, the head custodian in that particular building was out on an extended leave and needed overtime to cover that position. So that's why Center Road overtime was so high. There was a request for cost-benefit analysis on the two maintainers. As you recall, the two maintainers were requested by our maintainer supervisor, who is Mr. Kleinhans. However, they were not put forward in the budget, so they are not budgeted. However, the request is here. Mr. Kleinhans has provided the, an explanation, a narrative. I would bring your attention to the second paragraph, and it really says that what we are doing is working. In the last three and a half years, we've not had to bring in outside vendors for any day to do heat or air conditioning repairs, they've all been handled in-house. And this is also the case with electrical. There is very, very little that we have had to do outside. Mr. Kleinhans indicates, however, that the request would be to have an inside person to perform the maintenance in a very timely fashion and to get ahead of the curve, and to also start doing the preventive maintenance. So doing the electrical, the fire, what do they call it, the fire alarm repairs and the fire alarm checks that we do, but we need to do, in fact, I think we've got money in the budget for that on a more regular basis. And so we were looking, in that case, Mr. Kleinhans was looking to increase our services even better than they are right now. So we have not had outside vendors for electrical or for hardware, which is the other specialty right now, for HVAC, out of the ordinary at any rate. You can see conference fees remained in the schools. This was question number five. Question number six was a question, is this salary increase correct? Yes, it is. That particular principal is moving both a step and the increase of the step, so that is correct. The field, some field trips are located in central administration. Is there a correction needed? Field trips in general are not in central administration. There are many that are in pupil personnel, because that's where our next step students would, some of our vocational students at the high school. You can see the list of field trips by location there, and they're relatively close to one another in terms of per student spending. Let's see. The question number nine, there were art periodicals, and since we no longer have an art department head, the question was, do we need these? There is a response that they are for both student and teacher use, and certainly we still have a department head, we just don't have a coordinator. And so these are used. Out of district, the salary, last year's salary was .5 in the budget, and it's now listed at quite an increase. That was that last year it was an average salary for an administrator, .5, and this is subscribed specifically to the person who is doing that job right now, who has multiple degrees. Webmaster, we had been having a webmaster position and our assistant webmaster position, and that was to transfer from our old webpage to our new page. That was a lot of work. It was done terrifically, very efficiently, effectively, in fact, by our camera person here. And we have now put in a webmaster position. This is a different position. It talks about design, consistency across the district, and really bringing our webpage to the next level. So this is a part-time position, 15 hours a week is the position. There was a question about the .3 support secretary position for the positions that have been eliminated as administrator seat and assessment, and was that, could that position be eliminated? The response is yes, and so we do have that. Can we eliminate the open secretary position in the business office? That is the accounts payable position, so no, I don't think we can eliminate it, unfortunately. We did just eliminate a .5 secretary position in the business office, however, as of the first of the year. So we are continually looking at that position, or all of our positions. The team members for year one and year two are accounted for in this year's budget, and I'm sure that Mr. Burke could show you where that is. Do you have it?
I just wanted to think that was missing from the answer, that we do receive some monies from the state that helps pay, defray the first cost of year one mentors. So the $250 mentioned in my line is for year two mentors to add it to the side. Thank you.
Next was a question about severance pay, and we do have many different secretaries. We don't know how many are intending to retire. We do this based on experience and a best guess as to who might be retiring, if people have mentioned it. And so, you know, certainly there are some secretaries. One secretary did just retire and had quite, it was an independent secretary, non-affiliated, and had a large severance in her contract. The same with custodians. These are best guesses based on the people as we know them and what we think might happen, but we do need to be prepared for this. And we might have someone in another bargaining unit who is retiring, and so we would offset it with funding from this account. The teacher severance did go up. Is it because of 17 teachers retiring? Yes, certainly, that is going to be very tight this year. But we also anticipate a high number of teachers retiring over the next three to five years, and that has been expected from the state for many years. They have been saying this would be the time that we should expect that. Art conference fees and memberships will be used by teachers and department heads. The line items for these are in the question, so you certainly can find those. Even though there is not coordinator, it's the teachers and the department head and the teachers who will all use those. There was a question about LCD projectors and smart boards, and could that item, line item be reduced? And that certainly is the board's purview. We do want to increase the number of smart boards and their utilization, of course, at the elementary level. We want to increase the number of LCD projectors and possibly document cameras, if that's a possibility. But the LCD projectors that can be hooked to the teacher's laptop for presentation or whatever else is needed at the high school, and then the middle school has more of an X. There are some smart boards at the high school, but they are not used as pervasively. They will be used definitely in Algebra I and then in a few other courses and classes, but they're not used as often and across all subject areas as they are in the elementary Special ed supervisor who's retiring, so the Dr. Pacel supervises K through five special education as well as early childhood education and special programs. And because that is a crossover into regular education, Dr. Pacel's line item occurs in the central administration budget, and it's the third line down, if I recall. Office of Pupil Personnel services all children aged three to 21. And we have child fun, and the birth of three is when students enter at three years old. So there is a lot of work that is done, but that's where that resides. So they're in two different places. Pupil personnel is Mr. Wiley's position, the secondary supervisor, and Dr. Pacel's is in central administration. And Mrs. Buell has provided you with the structure as it is. If you recall, I told you a few weeks ago that futures education is in the district. They are doing an analysis of what we're having, what we do, and I'm hoping greatly for them to provide us with some suggestions, some best practices that they will see in other districts. So we are not, I'm not putting any positions on the table, but I'm also not saying right now that any of these positions are absolutely mandatory. We would like to hear from the consultants and see what they suggest and how we can improve our practice. Temporary salaries is both summertime salaries and summer programming, so cleaning and programming. We do have a group of temporary workers who go from school to school. We started that the summer before last, and that has worked very well, two summers in a row. We have increased that group of people, if you recall, four summers ago or three summers ago. We were, the Thursday before school opened, and I was still crossing my fingers, hoping that we were going to be able to open. And we were, but that meant working just about 24 hours a day to get all our schools ready. So we have a team of temporary workers who come in and do assist in those schools, school to do that. Summertime salaries are students who require extended years, so this would be staff salaries, it would be special educators, para professionals, anything else that is needed. It could be an older student who's going out on a job internship in the summer, job placement as well. AT is assistive technology evaluation. There were questions about AT and VCBA. AT means all kinds of assistive technology. Mrs. Buell provided you a definition from Wikipedia, but this does have to be evaluated and determined as to what kinds of assistive technology. Assistive technology does not mean something electronic. It could also mean a shaded cellophane piece of paper, because the student can actually see the letters on a page more clearly if they see them through a yellow sheet, clear sheet. So there are low-tech things, something that might go around with pencils, so a student could grip. That is assistive technology if they were having difficulty gripping a pencil. So there's all kinds of assistive technology, and that does need to be evaluated. VCBA is board certified behavior analyst, and that mostly deals with students on the autism spectrum disorder continuum. Let's see. The parent brochures are, this is something we had talked about, the communications committee last year, the previous board had spoken about. These are brochures that would sell our district. They are K-12 brochures, so they would be given to real estate agents, to town hall. They would be given out to all our fifth and eighth grade families, so that they could see what we offer here and anyone coming into the district. So this would be a first set of 5,000 of these brochures. Question about conference and membership fees necessary for HR. As you recall, this is a brand-new department, and so this department is still learning and trying to get it right the first time. So they are, they're doing lots of work. Do we need two more vans? That was the plan. The board saw that plan a year ago, I think. And we currently have seven vans. Three of them are 18 months old, so it must have been two years ago that we saw that, that plan. And they were the first phase of the replacement plan. The other four are all about 12 to 14 years old, and they each have an excess of 120,000 miles on them, and they have various mechanical and body problems, so they are outlived. We look to replace all four, but it would be two in this year's, in next year's budget, and then two in the following year's budget. The painter position has not been filled because of the freeze. There is a detailed explanation from Mr. Kleinhans there about painting, which is maintaining, it's not just aesthetics. It certainly, it stops deterioration of wood and metal affected by the weather or by use. It saves money on stained ceilings, sanitary cleanable surfaces in the schools if they're painted. So there are, there are many benefits from having a painter. The painter right now is in the budget, but if the board chooses to remove the painter position, then certainly the painting supplies for 14,000 would also be removed. Vernon Elementary School has asked for walls, and that is, they have three large classrooms, and they are looking for walls in a couple of those classrooms to make for smaller learning environments. They are also looking for cameras, and they are looking for an LCD projector. They can get an overhead projector from another, another school. We have plenty of those. Question was, can the principal of Vernon Elementary School take on added responsibilities? And Mrs. Buell has responded, I'm sure with Mrs. Sherman's input, that this is a full-time job, and once we start recruiting students, especially from out of district to the program, that we need to continue to run the program well, supervise it, and so that really is a full-time job. How many special ed students are at Rockville High? We have an opening. One of our teachers is retiring. And there are 105 special education students with eight full-time teachers. This does not include our special programs at the high school. This is students that receive their help, their education in the general population, might have a resource room, or might just have the support of a case manager as well, who's co-teaching in their classroom. There are two stipends for special ed department head at the high school. One is for the special ed department head, and the other is for the lead teacher of the TELP program. The non-affiliated general instruction individual is the in-school suspension monitor. The board approved that position three or four years ago, when, when the state was making a push to slow down or eliminate out-of-school suspensions. There's an open secretarial position at the high school. Could we possibly not fill that? That is one of the assistant principals. I think Mr. Rocket has just offered that position, if I recall. Is that correct, Mr. Rocket? The high school?
When you say offered that position?
There's the, I thought we had a candidate for that position.
Oh, yes. Yes, we do.
Thank you. You didn't give me enough time on some of those. Secretaries receive overtime. They put that on their time cards for evening programs, and it's never been budgeted separately, so I think it's budgeted separately. Temporary salaries, do talk about auditorium lights, but that also, that means turning on the lights and providing, providing the technicians that we need at the, at the auditorium. We do have people on staff who do provide that service. They do get paid for it. And if we are able to collect a fee from the outside organization, at this point, we have not been able to access those fees. Those go in as building use fees, as opposed to reduction to expenses. So we have to budget for this ourselves. There's money allotted for girls lacrosse officials and girls lacrosse buses. I've asked Dr. Pacel if she would just give us a couple-minute update, if she would, on this, and I think she has another idea of hers she'd like to share as well, if you don't mind. Who's got the microphone?
I can talk a lot about it. Hi, I did put that in there. There's a great deal of support in town to begin a girls lacrosse program at the high school. I've been going into various organizations in town, baseball, soccer, lacrosse, and talking about their youth, and there are a great number of individuals at the seventh and eighth grade girls level that are playing lacrosse right now and really want to continue playing at the high school level. And so what I've done, we are going to start a sports club this year with lacrosse. We're going to try to get the girls together, see if we can get a few scrimmages. Next year, we're going to try to progress. Again, we're going to stay as a sports club, but we're going to try to progress and go to a few away games, maybe host some games, and that's why you'll see money in the budget that are put in there for officials and for some transportation. I did not want to come to you with requests for equipment or for a coach until I was sure this was a viable program. But Mr. Rocket and I talked a great deal about the fact that a very important part of attracting students to Rockville High School and keeping students at Rockville High School is the athletic program. So I need to look to include those and expand those. Right now, we have 13 sports for boys, nine for the girls. We do have a boys lacrosse team, and so I'm looking to add some opportunities for our girls, and this is, again, one that has a great deal of interest. We also, again, I'm looking to strengthen our programs across the board. I'm going to start a sports club for track and field at the middle school. Our track and field programs are not strong at this point in time. We have one athlete that's terrific, and she's kind of carrying the program this time, but I know we have other kids that would participate, but there's no feeder program into the high school. So we're going to start that sports club at the middle school and try to get more kids interested in that. And hopefully, down the road, maybe we'll be able to add, you know, add an interest class to export at the middle school as well, because most of the towns in our area have those. So again, these are important things to keep kids in Vernon and keep them excited about playing for our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Pacel. The next question is about diploma printing and covers. It looks like a new expense. Mr. Rocket could not find it anywhere in the budget this year, so he thinks that it was improperly budgeted for the current year, 13-14. And so he has put it together in one line item for next year. An increase of $1,000 for faculty caps and gowns, those are rented. Apparently, there are very few people who do own their own or have kept them. And as you notice, at graduation, we do get more and more each year, people marching. We also have elementary teachers and principals marching, which is appropriate. We are a K-12 system, and so I was quite delighted to see some of our elementary teachers marching with, with students, marching as faculty. So, so yes, that is increased. The PBIS supplies, my understanding is that the high school has not been as vigilant on the implementation of PBIS, and so they are now exploring how they can do that, how it would be good for Rockville High School, and this would cover a variety of things. Posters to announce what their core values are, classroom contracts, tickets to students, which would be rewards, whatever they decide will be rewards. The next one was a formula error. Number 43, I'm just skipping ones that I think you can, you can look at very easily. Number 43, at Lake Street, why is the purchasing of library books increased so much? Each of the school's libraries accounts are still in their local, their location accounts, and they are looking at it. So under the Common Core, we want students to be reading much more nonfiction and a variety of genre. There are many genres, and so each school is looking at their particular library to see where they need to increase their supply of books. And so at Lake Street, Mrs. Duenzel has supplied, has replied for you. She's looking for things such as folk tales, fables, mythology. This year, there was an early budget freeze, and so she was unable to purchase those books that she intended to purchase, and so they are looking to do that. Class sizes at Vernon Center Middle School and Rockville High, we did pass those out last time, and they certainly look good. You can see that both Mr. Rocket and Mr. Harrison have given you, and they can certainly speak to this, I'm not going to speak for them, they've given a lot of reasons, while they, why they are asking not to reduce their staff, so that they can maintain those class sizes. The last, and they're, I think they're both here, I guess, and they can certainly speak to that. And then the last was how many full-time equivalents are in the health savings accounts, and we have at this point 283 full-time employees in that health savings account. And we have about 600 employees, not all of whom are full-time, and not all of whom are eligible for either an HSA or for medical insurance. So that's the end of the prepared questions. Oh, Mrs. Buell. There was a question about, this is number, I lost it. Number two, how many para educators are in each building and classroom? And then there was a question about how many students, special ed students were at Rockville. What you have is the census of para educators in front of you, and so it lists where the person is by location, so they're sorted by school, and then I think they're sorted alpha within the school. The number of hours the person works for week, per week, and what type of assignment they have. One-to-one, and that could be in a special program or not, but one-to-one. Encore is where they're working with small groups all day, that could be in the classroom as well as during that half-hour encore block that each grade level has. What other kinds? You can see that there are special programs here in, our next step special program, our TELP program, our Vernon Elementary School. So each location, each school has the, the assignment of the person. There's one in the office, the middle school as well.
If, are the hours correct? Some of these pairs are actually working six and a half hours per week?
Those would be per day, I'm sorry.
All right.
Those are per day. I apologize. It does say week, yes. Those are all the daily hours. I truly apologize. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? That's a lot of information. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? That's a lot of information to take in at once. Suggestions of where we go from here? Mr. Stansel.
I do have a few questions. They don't necessarily relate to material, just covered, so if you'd like to hold one I can.
I don't think anyone else has any questions in regards to the answers that Dr. Conaway just gave us.
The central office budget, line item 51153, tutors. Can you explain the way and where tutors used as opposed to other staff?
I'm sorry, what was the number of that again?
51153.
Mrs. Fuehl?
Yes.
Would you like to take that? Thank you.
Sure. We do use tutors when students are ill, unable to come to school, injured and unable to come to school. There are times that students are expelled from school. The tutors are funded to support these students through the tutor account. There are a variety of different reasons why students have tutors. The basic reason is when they can't come to school, but we're still obligated to educate them, such as expulsion, injury, pregnancy, those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you. And the next question. The, on Rockville High School account 55650, under conference and fees, a lot of the sports are individually broken out into conference and fee membership, but there's, the very first line item for that, RHS, it says inner, I guess it's inner school sports student activities or something, $1,400. Is that some bucket that covers a number of teams? Because, like I said, a lot of the others are, they seem to be broken out.
That is the triple C membership. We are in the Central Connecticut Conference, Athletic Conference, so it's a triple C membership.
Okay.
What was the number of that?
That was 55650. And if you're looking in the white pages, it is the fourth item up at the bottom.
It does belong to.
And then I had one more question, and this is probably one that's going to take a little time to gather some information on. I was wondering what the Board of Education spends on ourselves. Between the K fees that I see in here and all the training and everything else that goes on, what is the budget for next year's Board of Education?
I can break that, it'll be easy for me to do it for you for next time, but I, I'm hoping we can do that on, at Monday's meeting, we'll have time at the Board, so it's been added on, so when you have an extra session, we can talk about that. So I'll have that ready for you on Monday.
Great, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Clay, while we're waiting.
Following on to what Paul was discussing about fees, is there a listing anywhere of the total fees, the Board of Education pays not only for ourselves but for students, the schools, memberships? Going through the wrong list, there seems to be a great many memberships that you belong to for one reason or another. Just to get a sense of how much we expend, it must be considerable for all. Did I miss a grant?
In 55650, if you look in the helicopter view pages, so the summary budget, you'll see that we do spend $77,000, just about $78,000, that's the plan. This year's budget is 71.
What's in the report, please?
55650. It's the same line that Mr. Stansel was just speaking about, so this would be in the, in the budget summary pages on page four of six. Right in the middle. And that would include, and I can break that out for you, it's in the spreadsheet, so I'm sure we can break it out just for that if you would like, but it would include fees if the, if students make the state championship in cross country, so we have to pay a fee for them to participate in that. Fee for the triple C, it would include membership, memberships for the superintendent, for other administrators to belong to the national, for teachers to belong to the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, for us to belong to other professional organizations, the Connecticut Association of Schools. There are quite, you're right, quite a large variety of those, but we can break those out into a sheet for you if you wish, at every school.
Not necessary. I just wanted to bring my grant to all, because if you go into the individual areas, it would just be fee for this, fee for that.
It's $77,689. Anyone else have any questions?
Just a quick one. We have two people, this is item line 51123.
In which locations?
In central office. And this is the white pages. We have two people that are for our information technology, not affiliated. How many people do we actually utilize in our technology or with the agreement with the town?
We have no employees that deal with the hardware at all. Mr. Lemoine is our integration technology person, and so he works with teachers, he makes suggestions into the Board's budget to principals on how we can integrate technology, so he'll make suggestions for technology, but he doesn't purchase, he doesn't repair. He knows how to, but he doesn't do any of that, that's not his role. So he is talking about integration. He works with teachers to plan how we're going to integrate into language arts, how we're going to get kids to type, learn to type, and those, those kinds of things. Carrie Pocallens, the other position, she is the data manager. So the first year she was here, she was paid by Education Jobs Fund, and then we moved her to the local budget when that, that went away. So she is in charge of our student information system. She keeps that up to date constantly.
Okay, so the people who maintain our hardware are through the town?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
So, but we do share that cost?
We do.
How many, do you know, or do we have someone that would know how many people actually do that job and if there's any open positions?
Mr. Ward, we have eight people, and we were hoping to add another one in the next budget, is that correct?
Correct, Dr. Conaway.
Thank you.
And that's for school and town?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think we take up a lot of their time. Mr. Stansel.
Through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ward was going to return some additional information to us, I believe, on the town, or the request for increase to the town data processing services budget. Do we have any of that ever mentioned yet?
Through you, Madam Chairwoman and Dr. Conaway. No, Mr. Stansel. The reasons that I articulated last week still apply, and I also referred to a possible refinement of the numbers that is not complete yet, with one of the factors being the cancellation of last night's council meeting. So I will have it for your next budget here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dr. Conaway, the dollar amounts that you've committed from the Alliance funding to, to the particulars in the budget are, is there room for flexibility, or are those a commitment that you make to the state? Can you change what those dollars are being spent on?
We can on an annual basis. That's a great question. We're just getting our third-year application ready. It's due, we've just been informed April 11th. So in the first two years, we do have positions that we're funding in those, in the first two years. This third year, we're going to try to fund fewer positions because we don't want to fall off the funding cliff in three years and not be able to fund any of those. So we're now in the decision-making process that any positions that we absolutely must keep, we're asking the Board to put in the budget. So that's why there's two kindergarten teachers, we certainly don't want to lose those. But yes, there is flexibility. The only thing that I would say is that we can't supplant. So we can't say we have a teacher in a program and already funded by the Board, I can't then fund that with Alliance District Funds.
But we could, just for the sake of discussion, before we finalize the budget, we could eliminate a position that's funded by Alliance dollars and then spend those Alliance dollars someplace else in the budget.
Through the Alliance?
Yes, certainly. Okay. Thank you.
I feel like I'm attacking you. This is just for my clarification. The lease arrangement that we're discussing entering with the town for the, for the computer equipment, would that, would that be line item 57712 in the central office budget, or is that an entirely separate line?
It was 57712, the first line under that, that is correct.
Great, thank you very much. Sorry, I can't. I just wanted to note, because I know there's been some discussion over this particular line item. This amount is a very slight increase over what we already spent last year. The leasing arrangement will allow us to replace computers that in some cases are older than the students at the high school. So I know that there is some concern about it. However, we already were spending that amount of money, so we might as well be selling it on newer computers as opposed to old computers. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
On the handout that we, on the handout that was given to us this evening, let's go in reverse. Question 45, the answer on how many FTEs or HSAs is 283. You clarified that there are 600 employees, not all are FTEs, and not all eligible for HSA, or not all eligible for medical, for insurance?
Or either, excuse me. Either. I did say both of those things, and it's for either.
Okay. And that is compared to about how many people? Last year, we had 100 or so in HSAs, I believe?
I honestly don't have the answer to that. Mr. Picaro, I'm sorry. Mr. Picaro, the number of people we had in HSA about this time last year?
I can tell you the number off the top of my head, but we can get that in a brief.
It's an increase, though, is it not?
Yes, it is, definitely an increase.
Okay, and this is because new hires are required, first of all, to have HSA exclusively?
In some contracts.
In some contracts? Okay. All right, thank you for that. Then, on question 26, you, this had to do with vehicle vans?
Yes.
Two vans are in the vehicle replacement plan. We currently have seven vans. The two that you plan on, is that to purchase or is that to lease them?
Through the chair. Those are for leasing purposes, to replace two vans that are aged and past their useful life and are fleet.
Okay, so the two would be leased. Correct. All right. Good, thank you. And if I could, item one. It's a very busy chart. I was trying to understand here, and align them, because there aren't as many categories on the right side as there are on the left side. But when you get down to it, there are basically four areas where professional development days were significantly, the number is significantly greater than the column on the right. 944 days. How many professional development days? Okay, the question, I'm sorry, the question is how many professional development days in the district are taken on school days? These charts show absences overall, so this is answering more than the question, which is okay. But in so doing, you're displaying 944 sick days last year. The figure on the right column is 404. And that contrasts also professional days 647 to 174, 609 to 246. And then there's one category where there's 117 medical unpaid days, and that category does not exist on the right-hand side. That looks like a very significant decrease until you notice on the top that the figures on the right are through today, which is halfway through the year. So it means that the 1,300 days will, if you double it, is 2,600 versus 3,000 in the year prior. That's a lot of days absent needing substitutes. It really begs the question, what experience have we had with substitute absent, absences needing substitutes in our prior years? And what is our process to manage that in the system? Have we implemented some kind of process to manage the need for substitutes, or have we looked at it, are we currently looking at it? Where are we on that, please?
I'll try to answer the question. I know that we are, we're looking at our neighbors right now. Mr. Burt is looking at our numbers with our FTE. He did get, I think, Collins' numbers today with their FTE, and he said were very comparable, the amount they spent last year with the number of people they had and where they are this year as well. We do have a process where we, we hire people, I don't think that's really your question, but where we hire substitute teachers. They are interviewed individually by Mr. Burt. They used to be done at the school level, we now do it at the central office level so that there's a consistency of whom we might, whom we might use. There is a payment in the teacher's contract, if we don't have a sub and a teacher has to cover a class, there is a payment that they put in for, if they wish to. Certain units in their contract, they are owed that, put in to cover a class. Not sure what, what else. We do talk about attendance. We do have several units that we do speak to employees when they have hit a certain number of absences. We don't allow unauthorized absence, and you can't just kind of take unpaid, it's all right, I don't have benefit time, I'm going to take the days off, that's not allowed, that's just taking free vacation time. So we try to manage it the best we can, and we try to get substitutes the best we can to do that. Mr. Burt, do you have, Chair, do you want to add anything to that?
Let me just give you a quick update in terms of the professional days, which was part of the question. At this point last year, it was professional days both paid and, I'm sorry, needing substitutes and not needing substitutes, it was approximately 500. As you can see over the other column, we're at 237. There's a couple reasons for essentially being at half the number from this time last year. One is the, this is part of the budget freeze for conference fees. The second piece is that all of these requests come through me. We have an online system called AESOP for substitutes, but also for legal requests and anything, a professional day comes through me. And I put it through to the building principals and through department chairs and through our curriculum leaders that if we are sending a teacher out to a conference, the expectation is that they will use that knowledge coming back to teach their peers. So that is, I mean, I'm sure this was done in the past, but we're being a little bit more selective in terms of how we're sending folks out to the conferences. In terms of the other districts, which was part of the question, I do have calls out, we haven't gotten any numbers back from them in terms of the professional days that are released. I am looking into the substitute lines in each budget. Was able to find Tallinn and South Windsor, we are, I'm sorry, we are very close to those, those budget lines, very, in terms of per student. Manchester, I looked at, and unfortunately, I think they have contracted services, it's difficult to pull it out of their budget.
All right. I don't have any further questions. It's just an interesting comparison I've never seen done before or provided to the board. So I don't.
Can I ask a question on that same page? You have sick, just have plain sick day and then under you have other sick days. What's the difference?
The sick days, I believe, I'm not sure the definition of those. I pulled these out of our, again, out of our systems. I am familiar with a sick day with pay and the family, the FMLA leave of absence and maternity leave and medical leave of absence. I do not know the definition between just a sick day and sick day with pay. I'm assuming it's a sick day unpaid, for whatever reason. You can see there's quite, there's not many of those.
Before we move on to the question, can you just give me an example of unauthorized, unpaid?
I cannot, no.
Yeah?
If a person is out above time, of benefit time, personal time, and they request to, I'm going to see my daughter, I'm taking the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that's unauthorized, and there's progressive discipline involved in that. So one day is not, you know, certainly you're not going to get fired for one day, but if you do it again and again, then certainly eventually you lose your job, you're not coming to work. So yes, people do that.
Mr. Kemp?
The column says, "Absences needing substitutes." And then it gives the reasons, but is this for substitutes for teachers exclusively? Or is this substitutes for all of our various types of employees? Let's say a nurse is absent. We would need a substitute for a nurse or any other position for that matter.
Through the chair. This is strictly teachers.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Well, in general, I mean, if it's only for teachers, then it doesn't include every other absence that we have in the system. I don't know. I guess I'd like to know more about this, but I'd like to be more specific than that this evening.
Mrs. Oen?
It's not relevant to that. I just, I just need clarification, and I missed a budget. So if this is a repeat, no, then just tell me it's a repeat, and I'll get an answer another time. Okay? Question twenty-one.
From this evening's handout.
Yes. We're getting out one, we have administrative structure. I thought Dr. Passell was, it says one FTE for the special education portion. I thought she was a part of FTE for, at the high school, athletic.
Athletic director. This year, there is a stipend for that. Excuse me. That's why Mr. Rocket had asked that to return as an administrator position. That's in the budget, is a .5 athletic director. There's a lot of, Dr. Passell, as you can tell, is doing a lot of work in that area, and we're very pleased with the work that is being done. So Mr. Rocket did a real great job supporting a request to return that position to a half-time administrator position. But this year, she's a full-time, I don't think she goes home. She's a full-time special education supervisor and early childhood person in special programs, as well as going there. So she starts very early in the day. Around two o'clock, she starts at the high school, and I know she's there probably six nights a week.
Okay. And I'm wondering, the half-time out-of-district PPT coordinator, the principal at DPS doesn't cover PPTs?
At Vernon Elementary School?
VES, sorry.
She would cover her PPTs for her students, all of whom have IEPs, so they will all have PPTs. Mr. Phelps is, took the .5 position to take work off of Mrs. Buell. Mrs. Buell was doing all the out-of-district PPTs through the island, Massachusetts, Litchfield, everywhere. And in order to free her up to do the HR half of her job, we created that position this year, when we reorganized central office.
Any other questions, Michelle? Mr. Stansfield?
Following up on that, just because I admit I'm a little confused. If the supervisor of special education is responsible for all of these out-of-district IEPs and special education programs, then doesn't that overlap with the out-of-district PPT coordinator?
I'm going to ask Mrs. Buell to respond there. Mr. Wiley does do some, mostly for helping kids come back to district.
Thank you. We do have a number of students, number one, that you read about all the time, that are in out-of-district placements. Those are special ed programs, special ed schools. We have then students that attend Magnet and Charter Schools, and those are students that might be, might have an IEP, they might also have a 504 plan, which require the Vernon Public Schools to go to those meetings and represent those students or those, you know, the Vernon Public Schools in those cases. So there are a large number of meetings that are required for us to attend. In the past, I did split up some of those with, when the structure was Sally Roger and I. Then this year, I'm not doing a bulk of those, and Mr. Phelps is doing those. And then Roger does some, and Dr. Passell Lewis does some as well. So we kind of pick and choose who's going to go to which one based on the need, based on what the, you know, the complexity of the case is. But I can assure you that we're busy doing PPTs. The added piece to that is when a child turns three, or when a child gets referred to special ed before their school age, we are required to conduct a PPT, conduct an eligibility or referral to special ed and eligibility. So we need to test students. So sometimes students come from birth to three. It's a whole slew of students that can come from birth to three services. We then need to determine whether or not that's a child that requires special ed services in the Vernon Public Schools. So there's a wide range of meetings that we go to, not just out-of-district PPTs, as in the students that you're used to seeing on your census.
Thank you.
Mr. Kemp, any questions?
Yes. And the handout, item thirty, please. Just referring to the item on the principal at Vernon Elementary School. The second sentence says, "We await the recommendations of futures education with regard to special ed supervision." Could you tell us when these recommendations might arrive?
They've indicated that they should have a report ready for us in early March. So I'm hoping we'll have recommendations then. They will also be giving a report to the Board of Education. They will come to your meeting. So I'm hoping that will be the first meeting in March.
And the number may have not changed, but last I recall, there are ten students at Vernon Elementary.
There are nine?
Eight.
There are eight.
Eight.
Did the report we got last week in the K-ten? I didn't. I'll have to look it up.
I don't think so.
I think it had gone up to ten and then two moved out of district, but that was before that report.
That's correct. Two returned, two went from VES to less restrictive programs in the Vernon Public Schools. So currently, we're at eight, but we have a couple that are in the process of returning back.
All right. Thank you. It's dated January seventh here.
It's in the, I'm looking at Mr. Kemp's notebook. It was in the financial report for Mr. Picaro. It's the report you prepared for him. And I don't have that one with me. I can go get it.
Well, anyway, it's one of the tendencies in the January seventh report, which is pretty recent. All right. Well, with the answers.
Mr. Kemp, Mrs. Buell is looking at the report right now.
You are reading, you are reading that correctly. It does say ten. And it was about the time of this reporting. It says, "As of December twenty-third," there were ten. We had, we had two students that transitioned. One was the last day on the twenty-third, and one started the program, you know, just shortly after. So I think between December twenty-third and, you know, I don't know if the meeting was January seventh, then we did, in that very first week, or the last week in December and the first week in January, two students transitioned back to our schools in a least, in a less restrictive setting.
All right. Thank you.
Are we recruiting new students, Patty, or are we just moving students in and out, in and out? And it's the same ten, some, you're moving into less restrictive and then you're moving other students in? Or are we actually gaining students from out of district?
I, our goal was to bring students and recruit students, as I told you.
Your goal.
I know. So our goal was to recruit them. And just this afternoon, I got permission to miss a district meeting so that I can go have a conversation with another district about our first potential tuition student in. So that's this week. So we are, you know, we're actively looking at that. And I think that, you know, districts, kids pop up on the radar at different times, and so it's really a matter of what makes sense for districts. Maybe they have a kid now surfacing, and so I am actively having conversations with area directors.
So you're doing that, not, not the principal?
I do that in a forum with area directors. As soon as that connection's made, Mrs. Sherman will then, you know, bring them in for a tour, bring them, meet the parents, meet the child, similar to how she has brought other students back to district to start the program.
Any other questions, Michelle? Mrs. Bush?
That's a pretty small learning environment. And I'd like to possibly get the information about how much time is spent or how many contacts are made out of district to do two things, either bring students back or to recruit students from other districts for tuition students. Because, you know, you're having eight or ten students. That should be able to be done, and I'd like to see how much time is allotted or how many contacts are made. Like I said, it's, there's eight or ten students in there right now, and that should free people up to be able to actively bring kids back in. Because as Kenny said, that is one of their goals.
I don't have the answer to your question specifically. I'm sure Mrs. Buell will be able to get that with Mrs. Sherman for next time. But I do, a couple of things. One is that I do know that Dr. Passell had been working over the fall with certain families to bring children, because there does have to be an agreement to bring children back to district, and was successful at that, bringing children back into that program, because we're always looking to bring them to the least restrictive environment, hopefully then eventually transition them back into the classroom. So I know that that was successful. I also know that when you're starting up the program, there was absolutely no recruitment going on in the fall, personally. It was somewhat of a rough start, a loud start sometimes, but you need to get it down. If you're going to invite people into your home, you really, you want the path to be pretty smooth so that things are on a routine basis. Every time a new child comes into the program, there is absolute upheaval. That's just the nature of the program. The students do need to adjust. The climate changes, the culture changes. But I think they're getting that down to a science at this point of how to introduce students in and how to manage that. And so it's a very different program than it was on September first. Very proud of the way it is right now. So I can answer before Mrs. Buell, just to say that there was no recruiting going on until probably November or December, and then it was not heavy recruitment. Mrs. Buell and I just spoke now. We know of a student, so she is going to speak to the directors, the area directors this week, and then actually speak individually with that particular person to get, have that person get in touch with Mrs. Sherman. So we're just starting that process right now. I will tell you, the other concern we have, as you know, is that the board has budgeted for this program. If we start getting more students in and those districts pay tuition, we still do not have a written agreement or any kind of agreement with the town that that tuition would be used to offset the additional expenses. If we have three or four more students, we need another teacher, we need another paraprofessional, we may need more materials. And so that tuition would offset that cost, certainly. And so unless we have those conversations with the town to assure, we can't dig the board deeper into a hole either. So we're just trying to go very carefully and slowly and open up those conversations. Thank you.
Just to continue on with that, where it says that having a full-time principal for eight students, that the job could not, that other responsibilities couldn't be taken on, I find, I find that difficult to believe that there isn't some of the other responsibilities that can be taken in the special ed department possibly to minimize more people maybe take over a little bit of Mr. Wiley's job and things like that. You know, like I said, it seems eight students, one principal, it seems. I know there are students that are a little more challenging, but I would like to see that we are offsetting some of the cost for them, for the special ed responsibilities.
I don't know, Mrs. Buell has, she apparently is ready.
I would just like to speak to the fact that the current program, as exists with the enrollment, number one, by creating the program, we were able to return students to district that we would not have been able to return. So initially, there's a cost savings just by creating the program. And then there were students that were not outplaced as a result of the program, and that's what the Board Finance Committee report indicates. And so I think that dollars and cents, the cost of the program's already cost-effective to us, just based on the students that we've serviced already. And there is no way that Mrs. Sherman really tries ever to leave the hall, or she's at the point now where she's able to step out to get the mail or to make a phone call. You know, I think the initial startup of the program was essential to have an administrator there. At any moment, anything can happen, and typically requires administrative oversight. As we bring students in, I bring, you know, I have this conversation at the end of the week with a director and say, well, I have an administrator on site seventy percent of the time. What about the other thirty? Well, we hope for the best. We just aren't willing, I'm not willing to take that risk because I think that it opens us up for liability. And so, you know, there have already been some challenging situations that have really required immediate, constant supervision by the administrator, especially creating a new program. And especially as your communicator of parents. I know that she and the staff of that program communicate daily, multiple times at times with family, because that's what's needed. And, you know, if we're saying that it's not cost-effective, then it's going to cost us a lot more to program differently for them, because they just don't believe that it's safe and the right thing to do for kids is to remove an administrator, you know, twenty, thirty percent of the time.
Can I ask a question in regards to that, too? What are the hours of the day for the students at Vernon Elementary? Do they start, or do they go home?
We follow the same times as the later elementary schools, and that's eight-thirty to three o'clock. They do have an early release on Wednesdays.
They do have an early release on Wednesdays.
I just wanted to add, as one of the few parents in district who can speak to having a child at the Vernon Elementary School. I just wanted to back up what Mrs. Beulah said. They do provide a number of services to families. There is quite a lot of communication typically involved in having a child there. So I just wanted to voice my appreciation for that.
When we discussed bringing a principal on at the beginning of the school year, the argument was made that we needed to have someone in place to not only run the program, but to do aggressive recruiting to bring the numbers up from what they were at the time, which I believe was six. And it's a little disconcerting to hear that there wasn't a lot of recruiting going on in October, November. I'm not sure why not, but I think that's what I just heard. So it's water over the dam. But I have to say, we're in a position of having to justify something that optically, when you look at raw numbers, doesn't look good. When counselors are looking at us and saying, "Why do you have such and such a person?" Whether it's trucks, cars, computers, or whatever. And we have eight people and it's run by a principal costing what it was. And yet, the reason for bringing that person on is not turning out to be what happened. So I think in fairness, we need to understand who's doing the recruiting. And we will have to be making some value judgments. It's all there is to it. Patty is saying that, "Well, we're going to save money and we should continue the program." And that may be. It still doesn't mean that there's a justification for paying that kind of salary to achieve those savings or to run the program effectively. It really doesn't. So there needs to be a much stronger argument for paying that kind of money as we have been.
Patty would like to respond.
I'm looking at the exhibit from the Budget Finance Subcommittee meeting. And the VES numbers, if you look at, let's take this December 23rd number. There were 10 students in the program, six of which returned to district and six that avoided outplacement. So, you know, even if you just look at those numbers, you're talking about, it's not just, again, eight kids. We're talking about a large number of kids. And on average, if you're saving $75,000 per outplacement, and that's minimal, this program pays for itself. And that's just one piece of it. We're offering a program that is better. It's in their district. It provides access to typical peers. It provides a better opportunity for kids to return to a less restrictive setting in the district. And as far as the recruitment goes, you know, my first directors meeting, we talked about it. I sent out emails about it over the summer. The first meeting was in September. But, you know, pretty quickly, we figured out that we just took kids from all over creation, put them in one building. They had to figure out how to make it run. With some new staff and new program, we had some logistics challenges. And so there were many things that we needed to kind of get in place. And those things did take some time and they did get in place. And we are in a much better place. As far as recruitment, some of that recruitment occurred before Sally Sherman ever became the principal there. And then it has been ongoing since then. For me, continues with Sally Sherman and continues with Lois Pacel. So we each kind of reach out to those families we have connections with or those other districts we might have connections with or directors we might have connections to. And we're all sort of, we all have our finger, you know, on a piece of it. And ultimately, we're trying to do the right thing for kids. And we're saving you money.
Mrs. Ard.
Has the board already expressed a concern about the timing of the futures education report? How it's not going to help us with this budget? They'll come in in March. And that if their recommendations are a bit waiting down short to help us out with this budget?
Right. That's just the way it is. They're not going to be able to be ready any earlier than that. However, generally, our presentation to the town council isn't until the end of March. So I would say that if there are any changes that we can make, I would certainly, even though it has then become the mayor's budget before it goes to the council, I would think that the board would want, would make a vote to say to the mayor, "You may make these adjustments. We plan to do this." So I wasn't, yes, it would be great if we could have it now. But it didn't, it wasn't at a time where it was already to the voters or where the council was going to approve it. Because they, my memory in the past few years is the council doesn't approve it until the end of March, beginning of April. And so we should absolutely have it by then and be able to make any adjustments or suggest to the mayor, since it's his budget, any adjustments at that point.
So can you make that known to the mayor when you give him the budget? That we're awaiting the information that may result in cost savings and our special education and the board would like the opportunity to make those adjustments in its budget?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Moore.
I just want to weigh in on this through you, to the rest of the board. I know there are some new members on this board. When we asked Ms. Beulah and Dr. Conway last year to put together a number of what it would cost to educate some of these kids in district, it was exactly that. It was for the kids in our district. So we weren't sending them out of town and paying the ridiculous cost. Recruiting outside was a potential extra bonus for us. But we weren't doing this to make money or to try to offset things. If we had space, we were going to consider doing that. If you go back to your notes from last year. So I think we need to make sure we keep focused. The intent of this program was to save Vernon money on our kids going out of town. And if we could supplant other kids into it to help offset that cost, that's what we were doing. And we need to make sure we keep that in mind. And it is saving us money. I mean, I think if you asked for that ROI that she did for us last year and you look at it right now, you will see we benefited. I think there was some transportation costs that we saw just recently in a finance committee meeting where if those six kids had been being bussed out at whatever the cost was, I mean, there was at least a $70,000 savings right there, okay? So we need to, you know, make sure we're supportive of the program for what we wanted the program to do. And that was to save us on special education costs. And as the program goes, it's going to save us more costs and we need to be looking for that.
I agree. In addition to saving money, the idea was also to give the kids a better program than what we thought they might be getting outside of the system. There's certainly advantages of doing this. And that's really not the argument. The question in this, on item 30, was added responsibilities. It wasn't, I didn't take this, I didn't put this question forward, but question 30 simply says, alludes to other responsibilities that this person might take on. And certainly, we want to keep the program, at least I do, and expand it. Frankly, I did think we'd end up with more kids than eight to 10. But be that as it may, it's working effectively as far as I can tell. But it really doesn't address, at least not yet in my mind, whether additional responsibilities might not be something that should be considered further.
I have a question about the Vernon Elementary School, but not in this same. I want to ask about the classroom walls, the interior classroom walls. We have the answer here, but it did not address whether it would help. Is there something being done to help minimize the noise? Because the high school students are complaining that they can hear things.
Also, we're proposing we're to create smaller learning spaces. Mrs. Sherman, would you stand up, please? Sure. Thank you. Also, we're proposing we're to create some smaller learning environments than the three classrooms that we have. Our goal is to talk about a place where kids could go to work one-on-one, to take a test, a calm down area so that we could avoid using the hallway and the take space area that has been put in place there. So they're not, the conversation I had with Mr. Blue, though, these walls are not going to be noise dampening the way we think of. But the goal is to keep children well-regulated and within their classroom to avoid the noise in the hallway.
Okay, so the high school students are hearing the noises from the hallway?
I would imagine that's where, because we share a hallway and then there's a wall where the class is right there. Our take space area is also on that same side of the wall. So, and I certainly have brought that back to the team there. And we have come up with some great ideas about how to minimize that noise.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions on the Vernon Elementary School? Any other questions on anything? I have, sorry. In regards to question number 31, the special ed students at Rockville High School. Say you have eight full-time special ed students. Looking at Rockville High School's budget, I count 13. So I, among some of them with special programs or what, if you could explain that.
Well, that's exactly, you answered your own question that I had asked. The opening is for a person who teaches, possibly runs a study hall, a resource room, so to speak. And so that's, we looked at that body of work. Because that's what the opening would affect if we did not fill it. Mrs. Beulah, I can add.
You're correct.
So we have, so when you say you have eight, you are counting that open position in that eight?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Kemp.
One of the overriding questions I have is not on any one particular item, but it's a general question of the technology we're going to have to have to effectively handle the new testing. So that's really the question. Are we going to have the appropriate technology and support to handle the testing coming up?
I would say that today, we don't, that we have a plan in place. I think Mr. Lemoy is here and would be able to answer that. So, and also, Mr. Gussi, I think Mrs. Fidget Shaker is here, who's our assessment coordinator and the major test. So I'll try, first, Mr. Lemoy.
Thank you. We have actually finally received all of the new hardware from the S-Back brand. That arrived either today or yesterday. So we're in the process of unpacking that. We have their Chromebooks specifically. And so we have tested using Chromebooks last year at the high school and had a successful run there. The biggest challenge this year is going to be, we have 415 Chromebooks to unpack and get ready. And so that's going to be the biggest challenge with the staff that we have in place.
Well, I realize unpacking is a challenge. I'd be happy to help you if I could, but the question is, are you going to be able to pack in time and get it done so that this new testing we've got to go through will happen the way we'd like it to happen?
Yeah, I think we're going to be able to get all of that ready to go in some capacity. Certainly, we're fortunate that we've got our order in early. And so we have all of the technology in at this point. So I believe that we're going to be in a good position. Last year, we managed to go through the testing. As you know, we were one of the pilot districts and we managed to get through quite fine, given the staff and the older technology that we have. So to me, we're going to be in a much stronger position. We're going to have a lot more flexibility. So I think we're going to be well-prepared.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'd like Mrs. Fidget Shaker, off the top of your head, to give, we have the testing windows that you sent to us just this week, I think it was, just to share with the board how the testing is spread out, that we're not talking about testing all students.
Absolutely. And that's more really spread out for our own sake in terms of not crashing the systems throughout the district. Each school was given an opportunity to select the dates. There's a 12-week window. And I think we're pretty much spread out. There are some schools which decided to, being the smaller sections of kids, they decided to test in one, within one window. Some of our elementary schools decided to say, "Okay, third grade will be in the first window and the fourth grade will be the second window or the fourth window." There are four different two-week sessions, three-week sessions that were offered to all the districts in the nation. And so we just selected the dates and sent them out. We have been assured by S-Back that even if we went beyond those, that particular deadline within the window, it was just fine. The windows were just selected to kind of keep it regulated, that not everybody is online all at the same time. So we've been working closely with Mr. Lemoy. We already received the browser instructions. And I think the staff already started to download that into the existing stations. And once the new ones are off and running, we will do the same. So we're pretty confident that people will be fine.
Mr. Stansfield?
Thank you. My question's for Mr. Lemoy. Are the Chromebooks, Mr. Lemoy, only going to be used in the high school? Or are they across the district for the testing?
No, they're district-wide.
Given the concerns about the infrastructure of the wireless in the middle school, does that present a challenge to the testing, since these are wireless devices?
Absolutely. In fact, the Chromebooks don't actually have Ethernet jacks. So these are wireless devices. And so we are going to be working in a non-perfect scenario there. That is a concern.
Thank you.
Well, you just qualified it a little bit. I thought you were giving me a definite yes, we're in a position to do the testing effectively.
I feel that we are. I think the big wild card is, you know, with the wireless devices in the, the wireless networks in the middle school and the other elementary schools, that does present a challenge. However, we do have coverage in those buildings. So chances are, we're going to be just fine. There may be instances where we have to pick up a Wi-Fi device and move it to cover a gap or to be a little more careful about where we set up the Chromebooks. That's all going to come out in the details as we start going through it. This will be our first time of a deployment of this size. The game plan is to try and focus in areas where we know we have concentrated wireless and not to deviate from that if we can.
I would like to ask, at the end of all the testing, you come back and report to us on how it all went?
Sure, I'd be happy.
Any other questions?
Mr. Kemp?
Just one last one. We'd appreciate an ongoing update on magnet school populations that are not necessarily by school, but how many kids are leaving us. And then your best forecast as to what you think that we may end up having to spend on magnet schools before the year is out. And the reason I'm asking about this again is that my understanding is the magnets don't come back and tell us until after we presented our numbers to the town council. And it's a moving target. I don't know if we'll have the clearest picture that we'd like to have by the time we have to finalize this particular budget. But the extent that you can advise us, it would be appreciated.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Kemp. Generally, I receive those numbers directly from CRET. I do not receive any numbers, however, from LEARN or the City of Hartford. But I received the CRET numbers. Last year, it was, I think, the first week in May, where all of their applications, all of their acceptance letters had been sent out. So I miss many of, that's probably the majority of the schools. But I miss all the Hartford magnet schools, Hartford Public School magnet schools, as well as the LEARN magnet schools and the charter schools. But I do have the letter, the number of acceptance letters that have gone out. Not that obviously, people have not responded at that point. But we'll have some idea of how many students have been accepted, how many new students have been accepted, but it won't be in May.
Well, ultimately, the question that is going to be, are we budgeting properly for what we think will happen? I realize it's an educated guess, but we increased our budget in that item previously and found out that that, in fact, wasn't even enough for what turned out to be. So I don't want that to happen again. We need to budget for what we think is going to happen, not what we wish would happen. We need to budget for what we think is going to happen, not what we wish would happen.
In that same topic, I've heard from several students that were accepted to our agriculture education school. Can we get a number of how many student, they were very actively recruiting students this year. I'd like to see where we stand with that program as well. They got their acceptance letters, and they're responding to those now. I'd like to stand atop of that as well.
Mr. Stansfield.
Awesome. Can we get the cost per student information as compared to the rest of our DURB?
The cost of education and student in Vernon?
Right, as compared to, you know, the similar towns. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have one. I got a plan to. On question number 24, which is the money for parent brochures or whatever, you had said that the money is being put to produce our promotional brochures, but I see there's only $3,000 in the budget.
That was Mrs. Beal's item, so I'll turn to Mrs. Beal. My hope was that with at least start the process, our initial quotes to produce 5,000, you know, packets, last year was $7,000. So whether or not we want to scale back, or whether or not you, as a board, want to, you know, fund that more, that would be your choice, but at least gets us in the ballpark to start the process.
So it would cost around $7,000 to do, we think?
That was our bid, our quote last year. I would say that's, it's fairly close.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Dr. Conway, did we overhear anything back from Town Hall regarding our request on this year, inquiry this year, to see if there was anything that we could do jointly through their economic development?
No, I did email the matter to ask, you know, for that connection, to ask on behalf of the board, and did not get a response.
Maybe Mr. Ward might be able to help us out with that, bringing that inquiry back again.
I'll re-mail tomorrow.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for tonight, or does anyone want to put any motions on the floor to take any action tonight? Then I, I'll get some stuff.
It may not be relevant to this budget, but it's a budget discussion, if we allow. I know, Dr. Conway, that there are superintendents and districts in Massachusetts who, that have investigated a four-day school week, extending the school day per day, and then four days a week, accomplishing the same number of hours, but eliminating the use of the building one day a week, and other things that are cost-saving and not detrimental to the educational outcomes. I'm wondering if that's something that you would, the board would consider asking the superintendent to look into as an option for us?
I can certainly look into that. You know, there are logistic problems, of course, but they're, they're not the education problems, they're more sports, and people using the building anyway, and those kinds of things. So the board would have to commit to Mondays are closed, and there was, of course, negotiations and all of that, but I think that the, I think it would be an interesting thing to do.
All other districts have moved some, are in the investigation process, but some have moved forward, so it wouldn't be reinventing the rule. If you don't mind, I'd prefer to put that in the form of a motion that, that the board requests the superintendent investigate the ramifications of a four-day school week.
Is there a second on that motion? Mr. Stansfield? Any discussion? Mr. Kemp?
No, I disagree.
Okay. Any, no questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We are going to, our board event meeting on Monday has a bill to do the right agenda, so we are going to add budget discussion on that, too, so we can start making decisions. And then our final budget, we hope will be our final budget meeting this next Wednesday. Anybody else?
I have one more thing, I just, I don't know if we clarified this, but with so many retirements this year, and I know we talked about VCMS and RHS for, you know, seeing if there can be any eliminating of positions through attrition. Is it possible to really scrutinize the positions that the retirements are in, and really look to see the ones that absolutely we need, and what we could do without?
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Stansfield.
Motion to adjourn.
There is a second. Second. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Watson.